And it is December 9th, 2014. This is the Town of Auburn Planning Board meeting, and I'm opening the meeting at 7:00 PM. Would everybody stand and please salute the flag? The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a new secretary coming with us today, and hope she's here for a long time. Why don't you introduce yourselves, everybody to have.
I'm Anita Shaw, and I'll be taking minutes for the planning board meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an A and R.
Yeah, the applicant applied for a special permit, a special permit for a Hammerhead lot in spring. She is applying for an A and R at this point to convey a small corner parcel.
Offered a building?
Yep, to accommodate a shed that's encroached on her property. So, um, it's not a buildable lot, but it will be added to the neighbor's lot here.
Alright, so in other words, the shed part of it that extends onto the other piece of property, she's just transferring over there?
That's correct. So she'll come back at the following meeting, after this is recorded, to convey the second lot for the Hammerhead. So tonight, we're not, this isn't a plan for the Hammerhead, but it's a step in that direction.
What's the pleasure of the committee, the board? I don't know what's wrong with them. Do we need a motion?
Make a motion to, let's turn around, except approval not required from it. Has met the conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
You have to write that down.
Yeah.
You should just have a list of things. Of common motions.
The applicant for 13.
We'll send you home with the Mylar and sign set of plans tonight.
a site plan approval under section 3.2.3.1.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a six-child family daycare for property located at 20 Chestnut Ave., Auburn, Massachusetts, map 10, parcel 109. And here, come on up, please, introduce yourself and...
Up to the table.
Why don't you sit down here?
I'm Carolyn Murray, 20 Chestnut Ave.
And I'm Benjamin Ellis, same address.
And we're asking for site plan approval for family childcare business versus the capacity of six kids.
Does it need all the requirements?
Um, the applicant has requested waivers for, on the site plan for site topography, site lighting, landscape plan, site plan, proposed system of drainage, and has presented, should be in your packet, the parking plan for the home daycare. In reviewing the plan, um...
I'll jump in through the chair. There's a little bit of history with it, Eric, I know the beginning of the history better, the applicant might explain it. The, I believe they came before the board this summer requesting daycare for 19 children, was it? And had submitted, I think, a similar plan, about the same plan. And at that time, I think they were directed that if they were going to have that many children, they'd have to look at doing a full site plan approval, engineered plan, I think a little more extensive and above and beyond what they were anticipating, to accommodate their current needs, which I believe is for a six children daycare facility. I think this would work. They actually had approached the DPW a few weeks ago, or actually probably over a month ago now, for an additional curb cut on their property. And because they had less than 100 feet of frontage, you actually, you have to have a special reason for the need for that curb cut. And as it turns out, this was the need for that, was for the daycare facility. So this will accommodate, or accomplish a couple of things. It'll provide them with the approval, for site plan approval, for the six children daycare facility, provides them with additional driveway as well, which allows me to be comfortable with approving their driveway permit. So it doesn't seem as though it's a large enough facility that you'd need to hire an engineer. It's more or less a free car driveway that they're constructing in front of their house. So I'm comfortable with what you presented.
Questions, Jonathan?
Well, I think the last time that you guys had come before the board, there were some, you had discussed using the facility as a, solely as a daycare facility and not living there, is that something that has changed?
Currently, it would be used for family care, so we would still live there.
You would still live there?
Yep.
And then, there was some issue as well, I don't remember, with the paved area in the rear needed to be fenced in, and then also the retaining wall in the front, that was going to be an issue if you wanted to widen it out. Have those issues been resolved?
The whole backyard is fenced in, all the way around. That was, that's been like that for...
I think the concern you had was regarding the, looking at the lot from the street, the right-hand side, rear fence wasn't existing. It was the neighbor's fence. I believe that was the concern. So we've set it up to have a small, one of those small, I don't know, those wire fences in place along the property line, ahead of their fence, although there isn't a requirement by the state to have a fence at all. But there is one in place, just to appease the board, for that matter, as far as the retaining wall on the right-hand side. That retaining wall was an issue if we were to go with the parking plan that was...
For a larger facility.
And thought up for, yeah, the larger facility, which we discussed the potential of bringing the parking around back, which was an idea of the board's. With what we're doing, it's not necessary. We do have 18 feet on the right-hand side driveway either way, but it's only going to be used for two parking spots at the top of the driveway.
Right, so you're still going to do the seven parking spots?
This is just to show that we, what we have now.
Okay.
So this parking, that's the four, is what we actually have currently. It's our original driveway.
And then the three more.
And then this was the additional three.
Three.
Right.
Yeah, and we did in fact have an engineer draw up a parking plan, and we had got in touch with Adam Bernie with the parking plan, and it was discussed at that time that what we had wasn't quite adequate. He had a chance to talk with Nick Atanavika in regards to the rules and regulations regarding commercial parking, and suggested we go back to the drawing board with our plan. So that kind of halted our plan on the larger facility at that time.
Jim, no?
No, I think it looks good.
Yeah?
And I'll make a motion that we approve the waivers.
Okay.
That were requested.
There were second motions were made, is it seconded?
Are there any residents here?
Any residents that want to speak on this? Any of yours?
I'll make the second then.
Alright, it's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hatched and passed.
Thank you.
Let's approve the waivers.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're going to approve the waivers. We have to approve the waivers.
Oh, no, you just did. So you approved the site plan.
Alright, entertain a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Made and seconded, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, I'm sure.
Well, she's not saying bad words at us yet.
Not yet.
Okay, and the next thing that we have is Washington Street, and I'm going to step out, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Wendy.
Okay, applicant is VNG 310 Washington LLC requesting a site plan approval under section 8.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for property located at 310 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 42, parcel 8.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Lawrence Broome from Fletcher Tilton, representing the petition of VNG 310 Washington Street LLC, and he's going to be putting Jim Cranston from Bowler Engineering through some plans up there that we're going to take a look at. But this site is a shell gasoline station at the corner of Washington Street, the end of Milbury Street, 120. This use is a shell gasoline station. The property is a non-conforming use under zoning, and there is, the plan here is to, I mean, we'll do that really briefly and tell you that we've gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a permit, a special permit, to extend the existing non-conforming use. The use that is proposed to be added or extended here is the addition of one fuel dispensing location, which will be at the, on the side of the, on the side of the fuel dispensing islands that is closest to Washington Street. It'll be between the two regular gasoline or gasoline dispensers. This is going to be a natural gas dispenser. It added to the property is also proposed to be a facility of compressed national, excuse me, a compressed gas facility, which is going to take natural gas out of the street, where the NSTAR system is bringing it in under low pressure to a facility on site, which compresses it, then distributes it, then sends it over to the dispenser. We have, again, we've acquired the special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's been cleared its appeal period, it's been recorded at the registry, so that is all set. We are also going to need, and the reason we're here is because we get a special permit under your, under section 941 of the bylaw, we need to come back to the planning board and get, and have the site plan reviewed. This is an existing site, as you all know, these are just, these are adds to the site. With the, we've, in preparation for tonight, the people who, the VNG people have met with the fire chief, the police chief, and listened to them, taken into account what their concerns are, and that is all reflected in the design that we have. And there's one more permit that we need to be acquired after this, in order for the project to go forward, and that would be a modification of existing storage, fuel storage license, which is with, between the fire department and the selectmen. So Jim's going to go through in detail and address, after he does the presentation, the items that were raised and the town review.
Thank you, Larry.
By the way, this is Rob Lake from VNG, and Tom Healy, who represents Noria Energy, which is the operator.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Jim Cranston, I'm with Bowler Engineering, representing VNG. They, they're a national retailer of compressed natural gas, it's a new program that they're implementing across the nation. We're here before you tonight for this existing shell gas station on Washington Street. Site fronts on Milbury Street and Washington Street here. There are three curb cuts today. There's a C store and a car wash present, and right now, there are currently four NPDs, or four islands where there are dispensers present, which includes diesel. This is a rendering of the site plan, call it up to show what we're proposing. Again, it's the addition of one CNG dispenser, compressed natural gas. As Laurie mentioned, it's proposed at the outermost island, out near the street. I think that's consistent with the current diesel operations, it'll keep fleet vehicles exterior to the site. And the way that it's situated, it's about five feet from the current dispenser today, so vehicles fueling would take up that dispenser location. So in other words, the amount of vehicles fueling at the site at any one given time is not going to increase, it's going to remain constant. Part of the infrastructure required to support the dispenser is the CNG, we call it a CNG in a box. That's right here in the back. That's actually manufactured by GE. It's an eight foot by 20, basically it's a skid of equipment that houses all of the compressors and dryers and electronics required to compress the gas. Again, the gas is taken from the street, NSTAR's the natural gas provider in this area. There will be a gas line routed to that compression system. There's also some electric upgrades required, a transformer in the back, as well as a gas meter back here. This is going to be within an enclosure, chain link fence, black vinyl with privacy slots, so you won't be able to see the equipment. There are gates proposed for access for maintenance, but those will be locked, and only adequate personnel will have access to those. We met with the former town planner, the building official previously, as well as fire and police department. There were a number of, I guess, existing site issues that we weren't aware of. We've gone through those with the manager of the property and VNG, and the plan that's before you tonight addresses all of their prior concerns, as outlined in the letter that we submitted. One of the items was having adequate clearance across the front of the building, the sidewalk. I know that there might be some obstructions out there today. Fire department said, hey, that needs to meet 521 CMR, where you have adequate accessible routes. So there's a note on the plan indicating that, so that will be addressed. Another concern was parking on the site, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good sized site for a gas station, so it's, there's a lot of room. People, I guess, tend to park where they want, so they wanted some striping and some pavement markings that would deter people from doing that. So we've added that here, in the front of the site, as well as some signage that tells people that there's additional parking on the north side. People tend to ignore that because it's obstructed by the building, so we've added some signage there. We've also added some additional parking spaces. I don't know if you're familiar with the site, but today, this is a big wide open massing of pavement, and the driveway is not really that well defined. What we've done is we've cut into this landscaped area and added four additional spaces. This red line represents the existing curb, so what we've done is we've added some pavement, but then we've actually added some, some more landscaping to offset the impacts. And in the end, we've also added some additional painted spaces over here, we've gained nine spaces on the site, so that will certainly, certainly help. There is a nominal increase in impervious area, but what we've done is we've added some recharge per mass DEP requirements. We have an infiltration trench around this concrete pad filled with stone, that means the recharge requirements, and our, our report concludes that there's a zero net increase in stormwater runoff for the site. There were some comments generated by the Public Works Department Engineering Group, that's the only comment, letter that we received to date. If you'd like, I can go through those briefly.
Please do.
How we would address those, okay? The first item had to do with the non-conforming use that's been addressed. As Laurie mentioned, we have a special permit that we received back in September. The second item is related to the front walkway and requiring 36 inches of clearance. So there, again, there is a note on the plan, and the property manager indicated that, you know, we would need to make that comply.
Just to clarify.
Sure.
I believe it includes the walkway that goes on the right side of the building, in front of this parking as well.
This here?
Yeah.
I don't think that's intended as a sidewalk, because it's like two feet wide.
Okay.
And part of the comments have to do with the accessible space.
Mm-hmm.
So, and not to jump ahead, but what we'll do, this needs to be van accessible, so we will need to add an eight-foot striped area here, and there's ample room to do that without impacting the operations. And with this existing ramp, that will be the accessible route for the handicap and visual, so I don't think that the side sidewalk would need to meet that criteria.
Okay.
Actually, jumping ahead, item three is provide one van accessible space. It actually is very easy here, the site grades allow it, it's less than 2% slope, and we can just stripe this area right here. The fourth item had to do with drainage calculations, we will provide him the backup information on that, that's not an issue. Item five was a request to extend the sidewalk on the south side of the building. I don't know that we want to do that, because it would impact the parking, it would impact the access. Pushing everything back will obstruct the entrance to the car wash, and we don't really want to lose any parking, so we'd rather not do that. Site today, I don't think there's any pedestrian access issues on that side.
Through the chair, I'm Bill Coyle, Town Engineer.
Okay.
I can either wait till he's done and then go through them, or as we, as we go reach individual comment, I could jump in.
I think probably as we reach individual comment.
Okay. Relative to that, what we're looking at was actually ending it at this parking stall, recognizing that you don't want to push this one back because you would block that. So if you were to extend the sidewalk here, okay, then these would shift back, and we're also, I think, going to get ahead of myself as well, is with this gore area, looking to have some sort of raised island, probably not to the extent of what you're showing as gore, I think it might squeeze that area too much, but both of these areas, we felt should be raised. There's been a long history in town of having traffic-related issues with that site, and I know that in meeting with the fire chief and others within the town, we're trying to come up with some way of trying to improve traffic flow in this area. Painted islands, we feel as though typically get ignored, people drive right on top of them and park on them, and they fade, and they eventually don't really serve any purpose. So we'd rather work with you with coming up with something that might work for your site, but also accommodate what we're trying to do here as well. And again, I think looking at it, to have a raised island on the entire gore area might squeeze that area too much, you might want to offset it maybe four feet, and we'll come up with something. Well, you tied this sidewalk in with this, wrap it around over here, and then run this back and end it here, so this parking stall wouldn't have to slide back. It doesn't have a wheelchair ramp at the end of this one, so you'd have a sidewalk coming around over here.
Okay, I guess that's obviously a new comment, we weren't aware of.
Well, no, that was...
Right, the comment letter, better. You know, I don't, I don't know if there's any operational issues over there, in terms of access for pedestrians?
Well, I think the cars right now, there's, I don't think there's anything stopping or protecting anybody. If you walk between the car and the building, we're trying to find some way of people accessing the store and having some protection. So by having that raised sidewalk area, it'll give them some level of protection, whether they're not, if you have a six inch curb there, where the curb stops, we can look at that as well. But right now, if you walk between the front of that car and the building, there's nothing to protect you.
Okay.
And how, why did you say the sidewalk in the front is right now 36 inches?
Well, there's, there's three and a half feet of clearance at the two columns, so it's probably about five feet from the face of the building.
And that's a single handicap accessible space?
Yes.
On the right-hand side?
The site only requires one.
And what purpose does that two-foot semi-sidewalk on that side of the building serve? Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
Is there restrooms over there?
Access to restrooms.
Are there restrooms there?
Something on that side. There's something I thought over there.
I don't know. I don't know if there's...
There's two restrooms over there.
I don't know if there's a utility on the side of the wall that they wanted to protect, I'm not really quite sure.
So if there are restrooms over there, and you leave that at two feet, how is someone in a mobility device able to access those restrooms?
You know, that's an existing site condition today. I'm not aware of any, any issues. You know, what we're proposing doesn't really affect it, but I don't really have an answer for how that works today.
You're introducing that accessible site on that side.
When you want to make that change, I think we would want to get an improvement at that time.
Absolutely, yeah.
So what are you suggesting?
Have the sidewalk be of an adequate width, that it would be able to be, the bathrooms could be...
Minimum four feet.
Four feet, yeah.
Through the chair, if I could jump in. Tom Healy with Noria Energy, and we're the shell wholesaler, fuel supplier, also responsible in the site maintenance here, and appreciate the comments that have come from the board and from Mr. Coyle. I stopped out there on the way in just to take a look, and it is a five-foot sidewalk along the front. There are several obstructions there that the operator has on the sidewalk right now. So we looked at ways that we can make the front sidewalk 36-inch clear all the way across. There are...
Excuse me, when you say 36-inch clear, I thought you just said it was five feet.
There's five feet, but it's got some displays, so what we need to, we need to maintain the 36-inch clear to have the accessible path for the wheelchair. So...
Why don't you, why don't you remove the displays?
We don't want to remove the displays.
You can't have it all.
So if you want to, we're, we're going to meet the code. By making it a 36-inch wide walk, we can meet the code, the 521 CMR. So I'm not sure that the displays are creating a problem.
Through the chair, as long as they maintain a three-foot minimum clear zone, then they accommodate the handicap accessibility requirement.
Okay.
Which they currently don't, but they're saying they will.
Will. And...
But I do agree with, with your comment and with the board's comment, that if we're looking at improving the site, I know maybe this is going beyond what you would, your scope of your work, but whether or not you speak with the property owner and work these things into the site plan, I think it's something, again, the town for several years now has had issues with on this site, so we feel as though it's an opportunity to try to make some improvements.
True.
Yeah, and you know, pedestrian safety is certainly one of those, but accessibility to those bathrooms for people and mobility devices.
Yeah.
You're introducing that accessible spot on that end of the building, so I feel very strongly about that.
It's an accessible spot to get to the ramp, to get into the building. I'm not sure how that sidewalk along the right side lays out right now. I'm not sure if there's a flush entry into the restrooms at this point, and I'm not sure what, what the status is of the restrooms themselves.
And I'm not sure what the status is of the restrooms themselves, the space. They're not built to new construction standards. ADA laws went into effect in 1991 and I'm not sure how long those restrooms were there. I was not involved with the site back then. So we'll take a look along the right side of the building to see what we can do to improve access to the restrooms.
That would be great.
Along the front, what we were planning to do, there are some bollards that are out at the front corner in front of the sidewalk. And they're spaced, I don't know, maybe another two feet away, one foot away from the edge of the sidewalk. What we're planning to do would be to flare out the sidewalk over in the left front of the building so that we could get that 36-inch clear without interfering with what he has out there with the displays right now. To address the issue of the gore areas, we were really struggling with that. We understand, we see the problems with the customers that are parking and blocking access to the fuel dispensers at certain times during the day. My concern with putting any type of gore, concrete, different type of surface is we have a lot of pedestrian activity there, too. And I'm really afraid that somebody's going to trip and hurt themselves there. So we really wanted to try this and see if we can put the striping in place, make sure it's maintained. I don't think the lot has been striped for a while, so it would require some ongoing maintenance. And then also the addition of some signage on the left side of the building directing people to other parking spaces on the right side of the building, plus the four additional spots that we're providing over in this area. We're really hoping we'll alleviate some of that congestion that occurs there during peak hours of the day.
Right.
Through the chairman. First of all, those parking spaces you're putting out there, somebody's going to have to walk at least 50 yards to get to the front door through a maze of traffic. Now, if anybody's been over to that station between 7:00 in the morning and 10:00 in the morning, pickup trucks, the whole nine yards, the whole gambit, that whole area to the left of the station is completely packed with cars and they don't park in any of the spots. They're just helter-skelter all over the place. The parking spaces you have on the right-hand side of that building, okay, are at a 90-degree angle with the parking spaces directly heading towards the rear and the car wash. There is no way that both those parking areas can be used at the same time. The people that would be parked straight ahead would conflict definitely with anybody trying to back out of those spots on the right-hand side of the building. So that's something that's, that whole parking scenario has got to be addressed. That's got to be addressed.
Jim, we, I don't get what you're describing.
The car wash entrance is over here.
No, no. On the right, on the right side of the building, the actual building, okay? They have parking spaces going into the building, okay? Into the building. They also have parking spaces going straight ahead into the green area.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, if anybody tries to back up from those spaces, either whether they back up from the spaces going into the greenery or they back up from the spaces going against the building, they're in direct conflict with the people that are parked on the opposite at the 90-degree angle. So in other words, you get two cars backing up at the same time, you're going to crash there.
I guess this is an existing condition and I don't know that this is any different than a shopping center parking lot where if you're backing up.
Well, sure it is. Sure, sure it is. There's no way that in a parking mall or whatever, they're going to have two spaces in.
How many spaces do you have going in?
Additional spaces.
Towards facing north.
There's five existing spaces. Oh, north?
Yeah, facing.
This whole area, there were three that were striped. There were some that were not striped on top of the tanks. We said this could be employee parking. So there's eight total over here.
And on the west side?
On the west side, there are five.
Right. Those are the ones that you're talking about.
And against.
You can't be in them if you're going to back up into the other one.
That's right, exactly.
So what's typically done in that scenario when you have vehicles that are parked at a 90-degree angle is you'll have either a striped-out spot, a hatched-out spot in this corner to get some separation between those parking spaces that are going at 90 degrees to each other to give, to allow the customer vehicles to back up a little bit and get out of there. I'm not sure, I'm not aware that we've been having any problems with conflicts there, but we certainly want to take a look at that because we want customers to use that side of the lot.
Well, that's why I brought it up, okay? And I've had conflicts in myself.
So.
And on the left-hand side of the building, as Bill Coyle brought up, okay, that's where the massive amount of cars are pulling into that lot and clogging up that whole area. Something's got to be done to design or redesign that area to the left-hand side of that building so that the massive amount of cars coming in there to hit Dunkin' Donuts. Don't forget, you've got five businesses in that one location. You've got a car wash, okay? You've got a gas pump situation. You have a variety store, okay? You've got Dunkin' Donuts and you've got the cleanup area over there where they can pull in and clean out their cars with the vacuum cleaners.
It's a busy site.
It's a very busy site.
Well, that's why we're concerned, because it's such a busy site. That's why we're concerned about the constant clog. And this is one way, I'm kind of glad you came before us, because this is one way we can clean it up so we don't have that situation again.
Well, as Jim had mentioned, we did spend some time, we made appointment with the police chief and the fire chief, and we understand the concerns that you're bringing up.
We appreciate that you did that.
And we're trying to address this. We don't have additional property to work with. The bulk of the traffic is coming in, you know, in that corner. You've got more traffic coming in from Milbury Street and we realize that is the area right now where we're having an issue. So myself, I want to clear up the path to the fuel dispensers also and try to make a better parking situation out here, so.
Bill, do you have any suggestions?
Through the chair, what I'd like to recommend is that if the, assuming the meeting were continued tonight, which I assume it would be, that we meet with their engineer and maybe we can go on-site and take a look at it and see what can be done to improve it and see if there's any other options.
Go there at 8:00 on the morning.
I'm very familiar with it. I know how difficult that site can be, so I would like to have the opportunity to meet with them and see if there's other ideas that we can come up with and try to make some improvements.
Go ahead, John.
I think that's a good plan. I think it makes sense at this point to go back and take a look at it with the engineer. I guess I would look at this and I think the concept of what the applicant is trying to do here is a positive thing. They're trying to improve the site here. I know it's a busy site. I go there as well. I drive by that every day at rush hour. But, you know, I don't know that we're going to solve the fact that it's busy and it's certainly not a deterrent to folks who are going there because they, it continues to be busy. And I don't see any epidemic of accidents or incidents that occur there. I think there are some, you know, some smart logistical things that we can, you know, try to accomplish at this point. I just want to, you know, keep the focus of kind of what we're looking at here and not trying to.
Through the chair, I think we are limited to what we can do there. I think there's so much that's been permitted at that location. But I think that given we have a small area to work with, I think if we spend some time and try to make sure that we're doing as much as we can do with the site, you know, it is very limited.
What about that gas storage area? Shouldn't there be a cement, some kind of a cement protective device, three or four feet high or at least the height of the tanks in that area, at least on three sides?
Which gas?
No, the compressed.
A new compressor? You know, in this location, we're in a landscaped area, there's curbing along the front here. It's in fenced area. If we need, if, you know, if we wanted to put in some bollards, that's not a big deal to add for protection.
You're going to have parking right in front of it, yeah.
But this is the only area of concern. This is a very windy car wash entrance on the side of the site, but.
Right, that's unique as well, yeah.
Plus, this is down low and this is elevated, so this shouldn't, this wouldn't be a concern. But, you know, that's a good point. We could add some bollards there.
Ronnie, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
John?
Well, I would make a motion to continue to the next meeting if that's what the applicant chooses to do. Hopefully it can work, you know, since she's out, the town engineer, back.
8:00.
Any comments from the butters or anyone in the audience? Nope? Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
This is the next one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
January 13th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll be touched with that. Thank you.
Get some rest tonight.
Excuse me. Just happy to be here for the minutes, just to make sure we. You're. Jeff, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Your father was so bad.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. You want to? I'm not going in. I'm staying.
Tom, really, please. The one representing the property manager. He had the blackjack.
Oh, you have a problem. The next two, these two?
Yeah, which one do you want? What's the letter about the postponement?
Welcome Homes is.
Welcome Home postponed.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Is Welcome Homes postponed?
Okay.
So why don't we go to Jimmy and Wendy?
Yeah, let's do Jimmy next.
I don't know if any of the butters are there.
Yeah, I told them. Gibson, yeah, the Welcome Homes thing? Yeah, let me read that letter.
I don't know how much they will.
Yeah.
Right. You know what? They're not trying to do any accomplishments. They don't want to, they want to do the hatching because they want.
I don't think it's a good idea. Sometimes things are tough. You can just say. Say caution.
Yeah. You can say a little. But if you were to say, you know, introduce the project on all side attendance. Check on the action that you're there. People are so cautious because they can't see.
Right.
They creep out because there's no access.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
But I think trying to aim them, they definitely, people inside the building, they're packing. You know, on the new road. expand. Yeah. Somehow, there's something. Welcome Homes is postponed. Do you want the audience to know?
Yeah, false name.
Mr. Lundgren, I believe, is going to work.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to announce that Welcome Homes has been postponed?
Welcome Homes has asked for its postponement until next month.
So that's the project on Gibson Road? Will be, the hearing will be continued to January 13th.
Is anybody here?
If anyone is here for that.
I think I told them, do you have?
Okay.
All right.
Just a brief update through the chair, I did meet with them last week, so I'm going with some different options to try to minimize the fill, so I think that they're going to take some time to amend the plan now and then come back. But we did meet with them.
Okay, great. So we have to have a motion, have to have a motion postponed?
A motion to continue.
Continue, yeah.
Make a motion to continue to January 13th.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lundgren? Try to get the fast ones out of the way.
Hope so. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good, good.
And you're looking for?
What are you up to now?
All right, we're looking for a special permit for Hammerhead Lot.
Yep. You did a nice job on that road.
Thank you. Basically, what I have before you is there's one section of road, originally when I was building it, I wasn't sure I was going to extend the road in it. By having the Hammerhead Lot, I was able to get the, as I finished the road, by bylaw, I'm allowed to have the Hammerhead Lot. I did extensive engineering, as you can see, for a lot on that. I went way overboard to meet the requirements that's required by the bylaw, showing the radius in the middle, which is where the amount that you have to have. It goes far excess beyond the land that's required. It's two acres in that whole lot that's there, of that piece of property. The frontage is the only question, just right at the road. There's no site issues with it because it's at the end of the cul-de-sac, so you have a less frontage, but there's no, there's no traffic basically other than just one driveway coming out, which is limited, so the site isn't an issue on it. Like I said, there's no other traffic there other than the proposed driveway I have on there.
Jimmy, is it the big lot on the left here?
It's the one with the radius in the middle, if you see it. You have the.
Oh, okay, yeah, I got it.
The radius here shows a proposed house where I want to put the house. It's already been perked. It had, the perk test was fine on it and meets all the requirements by the bylaw. Like I said, I made extensive to match what the existing lots were around it. I made them all two acres on the street when I did the subdivision on the end. My extension was only a few hundred feet long when I did the road, but I upgraded the entire road, including the drainage, the engineering, all that stuff was at my cost to towns. And it was just accepted as a town-approved road at the last meeting with the town and I meet all the requirements as required by bylaw to have the Hammerhead Lot.
Is that a fair statement?
The only thing I, or potential conflict I noticed, under the provision for a Hammerhead Lot, the bylaw reads that the proposed house location should not be in the handle of the Hammerhead Lot unless the board determines such location will result in less impact to adjoining properties and will be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Well, in this case, I think that it's good where it is because it's in the thicker part of the lot and it leaves that to open space up in the corner.
Instead, it locks down. I have 28 acres maybe left over there. You could actually extend the road. I could have made it longer at the time I did it. This locks down all the property around that street for no extensions ever. It locks it down to that, just the frontage enough to what it is for that lot. The house is located and we did it, I could have made it anywhere I want with the mountain as I took that 180-foot radius to make it conform and pretty much with the rest of the houses on the neighborhood, the distance off the road. It's actually a little bit further off than most of the houses on the road. It keeps it set back and keeps some privacy to neighbors by setting it back a little bit and kind of separate them a little bit. There's not a house plan done yet. I, obviously, will be, the plan would have the garage in the high side, typical subdivision where you have the garage facing a living area of another house for privacy and stuff like that.
So that's on the west side?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Wendy? Jim?
Make a motion to accept it.
Second? We do have a butters present.
Yeah, I'm going to butter to the property.
Okay, why don't you come sit down and introduce yourself?
So I abut the property that Jimmy's proposing to build on. And when I read the provisions for Hammerhead Lot, again, as Eric had mentioned, the Hammerhead Lot shall not be in the handle of the Hammerhead unless, of course, the board determines that it should be. As far as character within the neighborhood, that same provision and diameter could fit in the very back of that lot. My understanding with a Hammerhead Lot is that that lot is to access property in the back. The also, well, the drawing that he produces here, each Hammerhead Lot according to 5.3.24, each Hammerhead Lot must contain an area in which a circle with a diameter equal to the normal frontage requirement of the zoning district be placed without touching the property line. That is sitting directly on my property line, that diameter of the circle. The also, well, the drawing that he produces here, each Hammerhead Lot, according to five point three point two four, each Hammerhead Lot must contain an area in which a circle with a diameter equal to the normal frontage requirement of the zoning district be placed without touching the property line. That is sitting directly on my property line, that diameter of the circle. And then also five point three point two six, any Hammerhead Lot shall be limited to a single family dwelling, which he proposes. The proposed house location must be shown on the plan, which he has submitted. I don't see that we're going to fit an eighty by forty foot house in between his driveway and mine. And the Hammerhead Lot shall contain an area of land which provides, in the opinion of the planning board, a suitable dwelling site based on the following criteria: topography, presence of wetland, and steep slopes. And I think if the land in the back is properly identified, you will identify that there are steep slopes and wetlands behind all of that land in the property. So I'm proposing that we take a look at that before we go ahead and approve this law.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
Yeah, Cynthia LaBelle.
If you, if you look on the, uh, the lot itself, it's not in the hammer, that's why the radius is shown as a hundred and eighty feet. It's actually wider than that circle there, that certain radius was fitted in there. It's actually a little bit wider on the plan, it might just show on that line a little bit. It's wider there. And the hammer itself coming in, the handle would be the lower part. The house is set in, obviously the house wouldn't be, that's an awfully big house, there's someone in a bigger house that big. We made it much larger just to accommodate what the house would be. I have a proposed person wants to build a house there. Um, and the plan to have it is a ranch that downsized since an older couple. In the back of my property, the back, there's wetlands in the back here, it's on the side. This is relatively flat in the back, and I believe, uh, the board helps here with the perks, they walked back there also. They saw the land, it does drop off to a lower level here, but it's no, the wetlands are far out of this, as you can tell on the plan and the engineering, it's not within the Rivers Act, it's not near the wetland proposed on the plan because it's not within a hundred feet buffer of the wetland on this, on this plan.
So therefore, this house can't go back into this lot when the radius will fit inside that?
It would, it would cost an extra nominal amount of money to put the house back here with the driveway, utilities. The utilities we separated as the lot next to it, that I have next door, so utility pole is actually on the side, so there's no ease we need except for the lot. The plan itself, when we did the lot, like I said, I have twenty something acres, I could put this on this side wherever, and this one laid out the best for utilities. And laying with the conformity of the radius, it's a distance back to a certain way. It's actually pretty far off the road now where we, we have it set up in a nice flat spot right there. It gives a nice approach for the driveway. There is no real slopes going up the side where the patrol driveway is.
But it's all wet in this area where you're proposing to build the house in the spring when the water comes in the fall? And where you, you know, perk the land which is behind the house here, you know, with some area.
This isn't wet at all, this is all gravel.
Through the, through the chair, I would say that, um, I believe the soil testing is in the back of the property, so any septic system they have to do would have to be at least fifty feet, um, from, from the, uh, the wetland area. So the wetland would have to be at least fifty feet from this area in the back.
And where is the well going to go to the home?
The proposed well would be a distance from, uh, your existing, existing septic, and from here, that's be a hundred feet, it would be somewhere in the front yard, close up here, similar to where yours is to the side. The only water that we have any runoff of there at all is you, when you installed your drain.
When you install the drain, yeah, when you install the drain here, you put it into that property.
That property, so that goes in there. That would be the only water that runs off over the surface, it doesn't cause a problem.
I, I don't believe, I mean, I, I've been out here, I don't think there's wetlands in the front area that.
In the spring there is.
Right, but I don't think it would be identified as well. And I think as he develops a site plan, he would have to have, um, wetlands identified on the plan if he's working within a hundred feet of any wetlands. So as he moves forward, he would have to look at that.
But is, if, can't we move the house back to this area? This is the handle of the, you know, proposed lot, which is a Hammerhead.
The handle, I would say that the handle would be up here. This is why we showed a hundred eighty foot radius. This would be equivalent to a house lot here, without even be, without all this excess. This is excess land that I just put with the lot to keep them all consistent.
But that's touching my property and it's touching over here on this property. And twenty feet from there takes me to the edge of the woods where you perked.
Twenty feet from where?
Twenty feet from my property line, to the state, to the property.
The house is, the state, you might have some traverse points out there, and just because there's a state there, it might not be an actual property.
Yeah, where is your property?
My property is where, where the line is here, that goes from this point all the way back.
There's, there's.
Yeah, okay, so she's here, goes back there, yeah, okay. So her frontage must be over here, all right? So this, you have to go past her place to get that.
Could be moved over a little bit too.
I know you already perked it, but could you move it back over here more?
You can move it back because the perch, they're located on, it'd be moved a little bit. It's, but again, you wouldn't want to be, utilities here, the poles up front, it lays out the best on the lot for this to be consistent without being way off the road.
I'm just saying, through the chair, to accommodate her concerns, if you slide it back, Jim, would, you could slide it off to the right a little bit too. I don't, I don't know if that worked.
Yeah, no, they can, it can be moved a little bit on the lot. But I just did this just to show where it would pose to be in that circle. You can move it in the circle here.
You can move it back to where you perked it.
Everyone knows that area, and with the engineer and, and town, this entire area has been bankrupt gravel. So there, there's no issues with water and wetlands at all, you know, and even to do the road and write the subdivision, there's no wetland to contend with.
Yeah, it's all, it's all gravel.
It's all gravel.
Yeah, Paul? Isn't the, the, you know, location of the home and everything kind of conversation for when we go back with a house proposal and a site plan? And this is just really, we're really having the conversation about creating the Hammerhead Lot?
Proving the law.
I don't have a problem with it is having the lot. I just don't want a house sitting behind my house that are looking at it.
And again, I think that's a, that's a conversation for another time.
So he can't put the house in there until he has another approval?
Exactly.
Then I'm okay with him selling law.
What was that now? You can't say that again, about? I don't want anybody thinking something that isn't.
Right, because through the, through the chair, unless he had, unless Mr. Lundgren has to go to the conservation commissioner or to another board, there wouldn't be a public hearing where that would be discussed.
No, in the, the, the next approval, after this special permit is approved by you guys, gone to the clerk, and then is recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds, then Mr. Lundgren will apply for approval not required, which is not a public hearing process.
And that's for this existing lot? Just because now we're making this, it's not public, we're just making this two separate lots.
But I mean, when it comes to time when the house is going to be built on the lot, permits and all of those kinds of things need to be?
That would be a building permit.
Just a building permit?
But it's found to the hundred eighty foot circle, and this shows that it fits into that, into that hundred eighty foot area. I showed the house in that area, we parked it existing off this, just for, like I said, to make it consistent with the other houses around the street. And just my opinion is that if someone doesn't want to look at the name of this house here because it never been there before, if doesn't change the bylaw that I meant existing, we purposely put the circle there. As you can see, we located the road, we've done everything way more than you probably see on most house lots. Spent a lot of money to show that this was done correctly. And, like I said, I, I work with the neighbors, we can try to relocate the house back a little bit further if you want to, but to, to absorb the cost of re-perking and having engineers back where it's already existing, and I'm in the hundred eighty foot circle that we show, I think is, uh, is beyond what's required.
That hundred eighty foot circle, I don't think will fit in this square up here, it'll barely fit in. Through the chair for clarification, the house doesn't have to go in that circle, the lot just needs to be able to accommodate a circle. That is the same width as the required frontage.
All right, so, in other words, the lot meets all the requirements at this point?
The lot meets the requirements.
All right, so we've got a motion before us and seconded?
The lot meets the requirements.
Yep.
The house is huge on here, the, the proposed house is, is not what's going to, I made it larger. I mean, if, I don't know, most people will build eighty foot long houses, I mean, someone might, but the, the people that move in here, they're an older couple that want to buy it, they want me to build them a house, and they're downside.
You could shave off that left side.
This would be cut back even more anyway, but like I said, you can't look at some of the stakes that are out because they have what they call traverse points and stuff, there's a engineering down on the street, that might not be what you're looking at. I'm not sure which ones you look at. There's, there's stakes and flags all over this area from all of them.
All right, well, we have a motion before us, it's seconded. Any other questions? Anyone else in the audience have anything to say? Well, hold on to motion, the motion is to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed?
I think this is going to end up being twenty feet shorter anyway.
Yeah, it's not as far as you think.
I don't want to pop my window and look at it, Jimmy, I want it back here. Put it behind the perk.
You can't really, it's up to where they want it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, next we have, uh.
We have clarification on who, who made that motion, who seconded?
I made the motion. Ronnie seconded it.
I'll make it.
All right, we have the last thing now.
So that's when it becomes a mayor, huh?
Yeah, that's what it's, that's what it's proven.
This, this was.
All right, so we're down to our last thing.
Actually showing an eighty foot house you're not going to build.
Yeah.
You can pull it off.
I don't want the house next to me either, but it's there. And clothes. Good evening, Mr. Rota?
Come back again.
Back again, yeah.
I believe, you guys should have got this in your email.
Yeah.
You sent the soft tissue out there as well.
Must be us, because of the air. You squeeze it twice.
Yeah, I should have got. And. We have. BJ's Gas Company. Okay, so. Welcome homes is continued. Jimmy's got his. Murphy got the head. And I don't know what she did with the other one. Rota?
I'm here on the site plan and special permit applications of, uh, the proposed BJ's gasoline station, uh, being proposed by Seventeen Sibley Street LLC. This is a, you have a site plan in front of you which relates to a one point six plus eight per car sale located at the corner of Sibley Street and Washington Street and Twenty. Site is located in the HB zoning district in Zone Three of the Aquifer or Water Protection District. Again, the proposed, um, use on the site is a BJ's gasoline fueling station containing eight fuel islands and sixteen fueling positions and a four hundred square foot kiosk. As you'll note on the plan, the access to the site is a limited access off of Route Twenty, limited, restricted right turn, right turn in. Progress is restricted right turn out. The project will require several permits other than site plan approval. Will require some permits from the, um, zoning board of appeals, which are pending. Hearing is next week. Special permits are needed for the use in the highway business district and in the Aquifer Three district. A special permit is needed for the sale and storage of fuels, and a special permit for the removal of soil to within ten feet of the seasonal high groundwater. Let me speak to the petition that you have for the special permit for the earth removal on this site, just for a moment if I can. The applicant dutifully filed for that special permit because I believe they were instructed to do so. However, I would remind the board that under the decision that was rendered in the Lowe's case, that earth removal related to the, the, uh, development of a site for an end use is no longer required. It's not applicable according to the land court. In addition to the ZBA permits, the, uh, there will need to be a permit acquired from the town for the storage of fuel, which will be, which won't be addressed until later on in the project, assuming the project progresses along. I'm going to turn this over, well, let me, uh, do some introductions first, I guess. Over by the board is going to run over the site plan is, uh, John Cusick. This is Nelson Cabral from BJ's, and Mike Jacobs from Seventeen, Principal of Seventeen Sibley Street LLC.
Good evening. Again, for the record, John Cusick with Water Engineering. I have an aerial printed out here just to show relation where the, where the site is. This here is, is Route Twenty. You've got Sibley Street located here, that's the existing, um, uh, the existing BJ's located there, that's the, uh, the car dealership. So the site is located on the southeast, southeast corner. Again, you're in a commercial, commercial corridor along, along Twenty to about these uses. We do have some residential uses behind us on, um, on Sibley. What we're looking to do is to construct the BJ's gas station. As was, uh, mentioned in the, in the introductions, uh, there are eight islands proposed with sixteen fueling stations total and a four hundred square foot kiosk located here. The driveway access to the site located in these two locations, the easternmost driveway here is enter only, uh, the westernmost is, is exit only, so right in, right out. Uh, this is a divided, uh, divided highway here, so you don't have to worry about people trying to sneak and make a left, uh, left hand turn out. We did look at alternate access points for the, uh, for the site. We actually had one where we had a driveway, um, located here off of Sibley, but after much, um, review, we looked at it real close and, and we thought it was best to keep the driveway, uh, as, as proposed on the plan, which is actually, it provides less access to the site than, um, than, than otherwise, but we felt that was the best, uh, the best proposal for what we, um, for what we have. The driveway locations, again, they are, I think, adequately sited on the, on the lot. They have the crest of the hill that's located right about here, so we've got about four hundred and fifty feet of, 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 uh, site distance from the, uh, the exiting driveway, uh, which is appropriate for the, uh, for the speeds that are shown. We, some cars that will enter the site will enter through the driveway here, proceed to one of the, the fueling stations. After you fuel, go in a counterclockwise location around the, uh, around the station and exit here.
Excuse me, can you push that around a little bit so that the butters can see it so please?
Yeah, let me try to do it this way. Does that work for everybody? You guys still see up there?
Yeah. Is that, can you all see that now? Okay, go ahead.
So as I was mentioning, we have the stopping site distance, which is adequate up to the, the top of the hill, which is located there. What we wanted to do was, again, we have a, a large lot to work in, which is nice, we're not trying to cram something into a very small area. So what we tried to do is, is keep as much of the improvements as possible on the, the eastern portion of the site away from, away from Sibley. So you'll note in this area here is where we have our, the air, the air fill station, um, the, the trash enclosure and the generator. Again, as far as possible over here as you could, you could put it. The canopy as well is moved as far to the east as, as possible. We're essentially right up on the stepback line here, which provides about eighty feet of, um, setback to, uh, to Sibley Street, uh, on, on this side. The utilities, or excuse me, the, um, the, the grading of the site, drive by, you can see it's got a nice little jump up in grade here, and everything slopes back to the, uh, to the rear of the site. It's approximately twenty feet of grade, grade change across the site. Again, about ninety-nine percent of the, the water from the site flows down this way through, and it comes over to, um, the Sibley Street where there's a drainage system in Sibley, which then connects down to a wetland area right about where my, where my hand is. So as part of the, uh, as part of the work, we're going to be cutting down some of the grades in this area, adding a little bit of fill, uh, over here as well. The drainage system proposed, uh, proposed for the site is fully compliant with the stormwater, Massachusetts Stormwater Guidelines. We have four, uh, catch basins, hooded, deep sun catch basins throughout the site. Those will discharge or be conveyed to a stormwater quality unit for treatment, which will then get conveyed to a detention basin that's located here, which will then discharge out to the drainage system in Sibley. And there's actually a catch basin located right here where my finger is. The basin is designed to fully contain and convey up to and over the one hundred year storm event. Uh, there is an overflow located here for storms that would be much greater than that, wherever the drainage flow comes down this way, and all of the water goes in the condition that it was previously. As is required by, by the regulations, we are reducing the amount of runoff on the site. We're not changing the location where it's going, but we're making it less than what's, what's there today. From a utility standpoint, uh, there are utilities available for us with adequate capacity, uh, both in, um, Sibley and in Route Twenty. We are going to be reconnecting to the utilities, uh, that are there, or connecting to, excuse me. Uh, there is a water line that's actually located along the frontage, it's kind of shallow, you know, you come up the hill and then they put it, they put it there. So based on the work that we're proposing, we will have to relocate that water line as part of, uh, as part of our work. From a, um, a landscape standpoint, what we, uh, what we really wanted to do was make sure we were being, um, really sensitive to, to our neighbors and to save as much of the existing vegetation that, um, that we could. What we, again, what was a big part of our design, we wanted to push everything located this way. So we've got a good fifty foot buffer between, uh, this curved line here and, and Sibley Street. So within that, if you drive down Sibley, you've got a hill that kind of comes up here, we're going to be able to maintain, you can kind of see the, the different tree lines over here, and a good thirty foot swath of. over here, a good 30-foot swath of, of existing trees that are located there. And again, if you drive by, you'll see they've been there for a while, they're mature trees that we'll be able to save. In this area here, we try to have as much of a, of the separation distance. We've got a good 40-foot landscape buffer separation distance there. Within that area, we want to provide a mixture of different types of trees and shrubs and screening along, really along our interface. As you can see, we have a staggered design here between ornamental pine trees, some shade trees, evergreens and shrubbery in the middle to give it a little bit of character. So we had a nice area to work with and I think we've come up with a, a nice buffering design. From the lighting plan, we have six lot lights along the perimeter of the, of the property. They're all 22 feet high, shoebox fixture. So essentially the light is within the, the light fixture itself, so you're not, you don't have the, the lens sticking up below. Everything is fully, fully downcast. There is zero spillage beyond the, the property lines. Again, we don't want to be a, provide a nuisance to any of the, any of our, our neighbors, so it's fully contained. One other item on the site plan, I actually pleased over, I want to, I want to go back to, I apologize. From a, from a, we talked about how trucks were actually getting into the site and getting out. Since we do have the luxury of having a, a large site here, what we're able to, to do is where we have the fueling facility for the, for the delivery trucks. We actually have a dedicated lane. Here's where the tanks are located here. So as the trucks come in, it's in a dedicated lane that's actually separated by a raised curb, which I think is a nice.
Where is the lane?
It's right in here. It's right over the, right over the tanks. So as the delivery truck comes in, it will pull in here. You have the, the fill port that's located here. So you've got a full curved island, you can kind of see where my finger's going, full curved island here.
One tanker at a time, that's that.
Oh yeah, yeah, you won't have more than, than a tanker at a time. So the truck is fully separated from the, the vehicles, which is a very nice, it's very nice we have that ability to do that. If you've got a lot of existing stations, you just don't have that, that room or the ability. So I did want to bring, bring that to your, your attention. So really, in, in summary, we have a, a plan that, again, it's a larger, it's a larger lot for the, for the use, which gives us some flexibility to come up with a design that has adequate buffering, separation distance, fully complies with the zoning coordinates. We don't need any, any relief or, or requests and we believe we can meet all of the associated site plan standards as, as well. So I can certainly go into some more, some more detail, but that's the overview of the plan set.
Did you all receive in the peer review from Graves in your email yesterday?
Yep.
I do have copies of that. I'm not assuming that you had.
Yeah, I, I can actually speak to that.
If you can?
Yep, absolutely. I was just going to afterwards. So we did receive a, a peer review from, from, from your peer review consultant relative to the site plan work. Actually, it was a very, very, very good comment letter. There were no major comments that require any type of a redesign or any technical issues. Couple of the comments, I'm going off the top of my mind here, top of my head, they wanted to make sure that we're showing some of the trees in this area that we're committing to protect, so we can add that to the, add that to the site plan. There was a comment about the, the ramp. We didn't come down to maintain access to your, your basin. There was a comment about the slope of the, of the, of the ramp heading down, which we can easily flatten that out without really making any, any impact to what we had there. There was a comment about just how we ran a certain drainage calculation with the pervious area. We ran, we ran that back in the office. It has no, no impact, so I can put that in writing back to the board. There was a, a comment about just some of the clearing over here to make sure that you had the rights to do that as you head on to a hill, a hill crest. We're doing a little bit of clearing in this area in the site line. We do have that ability, we can document that in, in writing before as well. And I think additionally too, they wanted just to make sure that we, that we got together with Mr. Coyle to review our, our proposed drainage connection over here. And we have had some preliminary discussions out in the field. Currently, right now, we're discharging, we have a, there's an existing swale that goes to a catch basin. We thought that was appropriate, but we're certainly willing to, to, to work with Mr. Coyle and make any modifications that he deems necessary. So overall, it was, there really weren't any, any major game changers coming out of the, the letter.
Yeah. We did receive a letter from the Faith Realty Trust.
Yes.
Which owns the property next door.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that as well.
Okay. Did you see the letter?
I did.
Well, I'll, I'll read it for the public anyway. "I'm writing regards to proposed project at Seventeen Sibley Street and F61 parcel 22. The site plan shows a stormwater retention basin in the northeast corner of the property. The plan further shows a spillway off the back of the basin that goes from the basin to the proposed tree line that borders the property line with Faith Realty Properties. As currently designed, the basin collects the stormwater from the site. In water in excess of what the basin can handle is all directed onto our property via the spillway. This is not acceptable. While we do not object to the idea of a service station on the property, the current plan should be revised so that the water is not collected and then channeled directly into Faith Realty Property."
Essentially, we agree, we shouldn't direct all the, the property, the basin and put all of it onto, onto somebody's property, which we actually do not do. Today, essentially, all the stormwater comes down, you know, through, through this property through here and then kind of comes over, there's a swale behind a house, a couple houses down onto, and then it goes on to Sibley. What we do is the basin is designed to be large enough to collect all of the stormwater, again, in excess of a 100-year storm event, discharge it out this way directly into the storm event. It's, it's good practice to have an overflow there for, you know, a storm that would be much larger than that. So we are not putting any new water. In fact, we're, we're reducing the amount of water that actually comes right to this area. So again, that's just for a greater than 100-year storm event. All of the water is in fact going around that property.
Now, what about backed up traffic? Traffic, a lot of times is backed up from the light down at the corner past Faith Ave. And I know because I take Faith Ave to avoid the light sometimes and Faith Ave is an absolute mess. I mean, it's, those poor people living on that street, I don't know.
Yeah. We, we did conduct a traffic study as part of this that, that did, that did counts out in the, out in the, the roadways. I think based, and essentially that the traffic study concluded that the driveways are adequate to support the, to support the site without, without issue. Essentially, when we have a, a right-in, right-out scenario, anybody that's currently on the road can, can come in and then would be able to sneak out at the appropriate time. We have a signal that's located here, probably about 450 so feet away.
For your property, for BJ's, right?
Yeah, exactly. So essentially, that will create gaps in the traffic streets when that light stops, you know, turns, it'll become a gap. And if the, the several was backed up, everything would clear and people would come out. They did look at the cycle timing and the cycles do clear out, or the, the lanes do clear out after each cycle. So we feel very comfortable with the, the traffic here. It has been sent out to a peer reviewer, your town, a peer reviewer. They have not conducted their review yet, so we'll obviously wait for their comments and address anything that they have as well.
Well, I know that the traffic backs up past Faith Ave. When that light, during the 5 o'clock traffic, 4:30 to 6 o'clock, many times have I taken Faith Ave and because you look down here and all you see is traffic all the way to the light. Have we looked at that, Bill?
Well, I can tell you my, my makes, overall, I, the project I don't have an issue with, but my main concern would be traffic flow. And as John mentioned, they, VHB, the Nassau and Boston will be conducting a peer review, but also Mass DOT will be issuing a permit. So the state will also have to review their access. So I, I will be contacting both VHB and Mass DOT to make sure that the, the driveways as designed are laid out the safest and to accommodate the traffic flow, the speeds of the traffic. I do have some concern with speeds on Route 20, as we all know, relatively high. And the two driveways, the one exiting, a little bit of a concern when they're coming off and then people taking a right on Sibley Street, you create sort of a weaving condition, which isn't always the most desirable situation. So I, I do want to look at that issue with both Mass DOT and with VHB to make sure what they're showing is, is the best design and there's not, there's no other options that may be more desirable, whether or not there's any need for deceleration lanes, looking at the configuration of both driveways again. So I think, you know, I haven't done a formal, a formal review at this point. Typically, once Graves does an in-depth review, we will do a, just a crucial review, but I do want to look at the geometry and the traffic flow at this site more, probably the most important.
Are there any plans at this time to do something with Faith Ave? Is it on the list to be repaved or?
Well, Faith Ave is, until they, I know they're going back and forth with conservation. I don't think that issue is completely done. I think there's still, I think there's still some movement in trying to realign Faith Avenue. So not, not until that issue is going to address.
You know, through the chairman, we, we just received this peer review statement from Graves tonight. We, we normally, as a board, do not accept any paperwork, including a peer review, unless it's submitted to us on the Thursday prior to the meeting. So with that in mind, I would, I would want to consider and have the board members consider that we need time to, we need time to look that over.
I think typically when we review a project of this size, we would want to see the project come back at a point in which all those concerns have been reviewed. I had a question, I guess, for Eric, which is process-wise, will, do we have a sense of when the VHB and DOT reviews will be completed so that those can come back before the next meeting? Is that your intention or?
I expected that we would sign an agreement with VHB today, but I, I didn't hear back from their team on a completed work program. Once we receive that work program, then we can procure the funds for the review and, and have them begin. The timeframe on that, with the extent of, of the review that they're doing, it looks to be about three weeks. So I think, you know, perhaps a later meeting in January to accommodate VHB's review and allow the board to receive their comments before the next hearing and allow Fuller to address the comments and, you know, I, I think that would make more sense and prevent you guys from going back and forth.
Through the chair, have you submitted to Mass DOT as of yet?
We, we have met with, with Mass DOT to review the, well, we actually met with them twice. We met with them once for the driveway over here that we're talking about, we started early on and I think, you know, we came to conclusion that, yeah, we really don't want to go that way. So then we went back to DOT and kind of reviewed this with them. So informally, we have sat down, reviewed it with, with Joe Fraley and, you know, he obviously can't give a formal opinion at that point, but was, appeared happy with what the, how the driveway configuration was. I suspect the traffic engineer will be making the formal submission within the next couple of days. I think he's got everything put together, he's waiting on a signature on the, on the application. So that should be going in this week.
Now, you met with any of the abutters to see if they have any concerns, right?
I don't believe there's been any, any abutter meetings.
Now, where is the lighting going to go? Is it going to be just on the concrete pad or are you going to have it around the area or is it going to infringe on their property? Is it going to infringe on their bedrooms at night?
Definitely, definitely not. That was, again, one thing I wanted to be very, very cautious of with the design, with the buffering we're proposing, the landscaping, lighting. We took that very, very seriously, we took a very close look at that. So as I mentioned earlier, the lighting will be fully 100% contained on our property. There'll be zero spillover onto any of the abuttered properties.
Where's it going to be?
Yeah, it's, it's going to go through that. There's six lots through, through six lot lights essentially around up the perimeter. One, two, three, four, five, six. Essentially, you've got space around it.
So it's on the pad?
Oh yeah, it lights, it lights the pad. We're not, we're not looking to light the, the area outside of it. So it's, you know, essentially a foot off the back of the curb, you put up the foundation.
You had said the perimeter of the, perimeter of the property, which is.
Yeah.
That would push it out over somebody's, could have.
Yeah, perimeter of the paved improvement would be, would be a more accurate statement.
That's good.
Yeah, absolutely.
The lighting plan showed that the brightest lights would be under the canopy.
Correct. Yeah, there's, under the canopy, obviously, that's where you want to make sure you're, you're well lit, people are dispensing fuel and, you know, that area needs to be well lit.
Through the chair, just one quick comment. John, did Mass DOT have any concerns with, with your, the tractor trailers are going to be located here? Obviously, they're going to have to decelerate partially in Route 20 because they're going to be, you know, pulling in at a short distance to, to being able to stop.
Yep. No, we, we did, again, review that with them all, all informally. We did talk about how that would have a separate area for the trucks, which obviously they were, they were, they were happy with it as expect. We did talk about decelerations. I know that was something you brought up during our informal meeting. And I think that they thought it was adequate based on the, the existing lane that you have up there. I want to say it's 10-plus feet, the, the shoulder that's.
You have a wide, there's a wide shoulder.
It's a very wide shoulder that's there. So I think based on, on those factors, they were, they were comfortable based on our, our meeting. And again, Joe Fraley, if you want to follow up.
Okay, yes, I just want to talk to him whether or not they, they would want to have the deceleration lane formalized, restripped.
Yep.
And the other street's a paper street.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, it's a paper street. There's currently a curb line kind of right, right here that comes up this area that really serves, you know, serves your abutter over from here mainly.
Of course, that deceleration lane would infringe on Langways' property.
Well, Langways aren't there anymore.
Yeah, up in here.
Well, they would have to look at the width of the shoulder. If it's a 10-foot shoulder, they may be able to either just re-stripe it or whether or not the state would, would allow them to do that or whether or not they would want them to do a, you know, a two-foot, two-foot box widening to have a slightly wider, I mean, that's something that would be up to the state, where it's state highway, but it's something that we discuss with them. I don't think it would affect the, the dealership because there's, at that point, I don't believe there's really any, all of the truck vehicles are displayed along that front here. They're not, they're really not using it as access.
Big display.
And one, one comment if I could, we're talking about timing. We, we fully expected to come, come back to the board. We weren't looking to get in and out of here tonight. We wanted to realize you just got some of this information. I think if possible, it would be best to be on the earlier January meeting. You know, we, we are on a, a timeline which we'd like to, to move forward with construction as early as possible in the, in the spring. So if we could do that, we feel comfortable with any comments we have. We'll be able to turn those around pretty, pretty easily. The ones that we got from Graves are pretty, pretty benign. It doesn't really result in any significant plan changes, I think we can, you know, within a day.
Jonathan, you have anything?
Looking at, I think, you know, it's very obvious that you've tried to be respectful for the neighborhood and I appreciate that. I think you've also touched on a lot of things that we've looked at in previous applications and are trying to keep access roads off secondary streets, especially on Route 20, so I appreciate that. I like the accessway that you have for the truck traffic, which has been an issue we've had in the past and you addressed that very well. I, I think overall, it's, you know, clearly a very thoughtful application and I appreciate that. I was curious for Bill's feedback on the neighbor comment on the, on the overflow in the rear and then just curious for neighbor comments.
Well, my, my concern would be that the comment relative to the channelized flow, and I know John had mentioned that, they're not increasing the flow, they're, they're not allowed to increase the flow on adjacent property, but currently it would be more of a sheet flow condition. And I think the abutters' concern would be that if in the event there was a 100-year storm event, you would no longer have a sheet flow condition, but it would be more of a channelized flow. And I think that's, and the letter specifically says channelized, so I think they kind of, they sort of understand that. So, I mean, we can look at that to see if there are any other options for discharge, but we'd obviously have to look at the grades of the site to see if it's, if it's limited.
Wendy? Jimmy?
No, I don't know.
Open it up today. Hi, I see your hands. Couple of hands. Come on. Introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, I'm Richard Kelly.
Okay.
And I live at 13 Sibley Street, which is right there. Now, I don't know where to begin. I've been here for 25 years. I'm going to get over this side, so not anybody's way. I've been at this property for 25 years. My wife has been there for 45 years, so. I've been at this property for 25 years, my wife has been there for 45 years. We, everybody on this street has a well that has not been addressed. Any excavation on this property has the real potential of disrupting the wells and the water table. Point one. Point two, this is a disaster waiting to happen. Sibley Street is a racetrack as it is, with the traffic from Home Depot and BJ's and the shortcuts from Connecticut and anyplace else you want to bingo, over to the Mass Pike. Six, 5 to 7 or 8 o'clock in the morning, it's one car right after another. There's children on the street, Elizabeth and Tim have children. I mean, it's, it's a disaster. Right now it is. I can only surmise that with advent of more traffic, that's going to increase. Now, he did, he did say there was a traffic study.
Yeah, they're going to do a traffic study, they have to go through the state. Bill's going to review it.
Because it was right in front of my house, and it was there for two days in the middle of the week, which is probably the least truck. Saturdays and Sundays from Home Depot, it's truck after truck after truck. As I say, I live here, drainage now, I get some in my cellar, I know my neighbors get drainage in this cellar, as it is now. This area here is, I don't know what the, what the level of it is, but it's, everything falls onto Sibley Street if you have a heavy rainstorm or a snowstorm or any of that. And this little drain here, which is right in front of my house, will not handle anything coming up here.
I don't know if we, have we studied that drain, Bill? See what?
I've had the sewer department out there to back out the system and to jet the lines, but I haven't been able to go out there yet to meet with them and to review it.
What happens is it fills up with leaves. I'm sorry.
That's okay. But that's something that we'll, we will address. I want to make sure that we're comfortable. I don't want to have to have an issue where it becomes a headache for the town to maintain.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at that and whether or not we need to do more off-site work for the drainage, if that's what has to happen. But we, about two weeks ago, we did send them out to clean the system, so I do have to review it, and then we'll, we can discuss with the engineer how to accommodate that.
All right. And the other thing I have, and this is personal, this area here, as it is right now, what's there blocks any noise, or a lot of the noise and a lot of the commotion from Route 20 and, is it Prime Motor Group now? Rip all that down and throw in a few shrubs. I might as well park myself on Route 20. So I would request some sort of a fencing as a noise buffer, especially, you know, and my neighbors will attest to this.
Well, that's something that, that's something that they can look at.
Yeah.
I mean, what we're doing, we're trying to give you the opinion of the abutters, or you know, it's a fence, and you're putting in bigger trees anyway. You're putting in pine trees and stuff, so they're not going to be shrubs, they're going to be pine trees, and, and you don't have to tell me about noise.
My lifetime takes a while for a pine tree to grow.
Because I live 300 feet from the Mass Pike, so you don't have to tell me about noise.
Yeah. And, you know, I just think that the traffic is really an issue that really has to be addressed.
Right.
Because that's not, where that is located, I don't know what the footage is from near to there, 40 feet, it's just, and like you said, it backs up from Prospect Street any given.
I take it probably three days.
Any given four times a week.
So. Okay, well, thank you.
That's all I have for right now. I can't think of anything else.
Well, they'll be back.
Yeah, I think when you take, like.
Why don't you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Elizabeth McCarthy. I live in this house next to.
Next to him, okay.
Yes. So with that in mind, there is a shoulder when you, right before Sibley Street, so I understand that. But when you try to make, if you go, I go in that shoulder, it's probably illegal because if you don't, you'll get rear-ended. And I've almost been in a car accident a number of times. And I go to BJ's on the weekends a lot. So coming from that traffic light and making that turn, and then if there's the station there, and then, I don't know how traffic would, I don't know. It would be very awkward. I think it would cause a lot of problems.
Usually you have two lanes of traffic backed up, and to get into Sibley Street, you have to actually pull into the, you know, off the road practically to get down, and they come down almost all the way from that light, all the way down, and then take a right.
Isn't, isn't that still partially on the hill, right? That's on a slope?
The, right where the signal is, that's, that's kind of the high point of the hill, but you start coming down towards, towards Sibley from, from the signal, which is the high point.
Well, maybe those are your comments. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Harry Carter, 9 Sibley Street. I don't think I've ever seen a gas station where they've got the fueling tanks in the front. Have you?
Yeah, Cumberland Farms.
Do they?
Yeah.
So if there's ever an incident right there with blocked people, they can't.
Yeah, they're, they're putting in these concrete things. I mean, I saw them, they poured concrete for, for days to get those tanks in Cumberland Farms. Because they're, they're right up against, they're right on the corner between 20.
Everything has to be done by the state fire marshal, the whole nine yards, okay?
I just suggested maybe those be turned to the southeast corner where they're more against commercial.
I think that they're much better off where they are.
Yeah. You're getting the trucks out of the way there. The difficulty we're having with Cumberland Farms is when they bring the trucks in, they're going out onto South Street, and they're not, so they were supposed to go and go back around and come out back onto 20, but they're not doing that because they can't make it. So this would be, with the, with the trucks, this would be better because they're going to go in and they're going to get back out on 20 without going down onto your street or anywhere else, you know?
From the top of those trees that are, that abut Rick's property right there to that canopy, what's the height of that lighted canopy right there? Is the canopy taller than the trees you're proposing to put in?
The, the trees will be, will grow taller than the canopy. The canopy's ultimately how, how high is that?
It's 14 feet to the, to the bottom. And then I think there's a three-foot station, so it's 17 feet.
Correct.
Although, I mean, I would probably like to see if any of that sight lighting get more to be the one next to Rick's property that is up against his trees right there, maybe if that could be shifted out of the way. Even though nothing is on our pro, you know, sheds off of your property onto ours, there still is a glow with that, I mean, we have that from Millbury Ford. We also have water shedding problems. Millbury plows their snow right to that edge. Now, where is the snow removal going to be piled from this site? Because ultimately, all our basements get flooded. We all have these country swales that they have in front of Rick's house, we all have them traversing our property, and from January to June, you can't cut our backyard, it's just, it exceeds these country swales, it runs down the side of Sibley Street, and that's why you got Sibley, and where it meets Faith is always corroded. I've been on that street 13 years, it's had 13 years of Band-Aids.
Okay.
I've been concerned with runoff.
So.
Maybe if that dumpster site can be pulled to the southeast. We currently listen to dumpsters, I know we're in squeezed in a commercial space, but we listen to dumpsters being dumped at 4 o'clock in the morning. Easter Sunday, we hear parking lots get cleaned off, so.
Call the cops.
We do. We call the cops. It stops for about an hour, and then it picks right up again. As far as dumping dumpsters in the neighborhood, they stop for about two days. Again, the driver, we have this problem. So, you know, although we are squeezed in between, we appreciate any consideration you can have to us.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, so, yes.
Can I just ask one more question? Does it matter, like, for soil contamination and all that? Like, we garden, we have a greenhouse, things like that. That's just something environmentally, like, we like to be able to say, is our garden going to be safe? I mean, should we even bother growing anything?
This will not change any, any of the growing conditions of the garden or create anything that's, that's unsafe. Again, it's a very, it's a very regulated industry relative to what you can do with the tanks and the piping and all that.
Yeah, it's a lot different now than it used to be. And they have to, everything has to be contained. You know, you don't just drop the tank in the ground like they used to do, because we have wells over in the high school football field because of gas tanks leaking, and we have to monitor them all the time. But this doesn't happen with these new installations.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. Where these state filling stations are, I see drainage there that leads into that detention pond. Did you say, is there grease traps or anything on that line that feeds into that detention pond?
There's no.
I mean, if a fuel tank, somebody, a hose breaks or there's a fuel leak, it's going to go down into that, and then it's going to be in that detention pond, eventually in our wells. Some of us already have MBTE in there.
Through the chair, that might, it might be something we could look at.
Yeah.
Maybe some sort of shut-off valve, so if there is ever a leak that we're able to contain, or a spill, we're able to contain that without it flowing.
That's a pretty standard.
Or some kind of sluice, this, that line before it gets into that detention pond should have some kind of automated sluice valve that's going to.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, I want to bring, you want to come back with the first weekend Jan, or the first meeting in January?
First meeting in January, possibly.
Okay, all right. Should we put them on first on the list? They had to wait today.
It's January 13th.
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll put you first on the list.
January 13th.
I'll make a motion to continue to January 13th.
Second. A motion's been made and seconded. Do we continue with the January 13th? Any comments or questions? If not?
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See you then. Now, can the neighbors contact anybody if they, if they want? Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. What else we got?
I believe now we have some signatures. Enjoy the holidays.
Thanks, you as well.
Sorry. I got.
No, it's okay. I understand.
Yeah. For 48 Elmwood, they, we got, well, you approved the earthfill special permit. They did resubmit plans that contain the ground filtration for the driveway and the roof, and also a note that for hydroseeds instead of regular seeding on the finished wall in there.
I imagine the building inspector's been looking at that wall they're putting up there.
Yeah. The nice part is that, you know, with engineering's recommendations, they were able to reduce those walls from four to one. So since you approved this last, this special permit, last meeting, we'll have you sign the decision. And also, if you could sign these two plans in the signature box as well, if you approve the, that would be great.
Did you say that was at the last meeting in November?
Yeah, so you'll, you'll sustain from signing. And then Pollard approached us last meeting for approval to resubmit to the zoning board.
Make them sign twice as big.
Yeah.
Giant.
We voted our consent, and so you'll just sign the letter saying that.
Okay.
As well.
Will you hold me on copy?
Yeah.
I like the person I see there.
It's not the whole poll of there, all this face up there.
I do too. It's some big sense.
I mean, you got, what is it, the biggest bottling, the second, the biggest independent bottling company in the country, and they want to put a sign up there.
I think Anita too, we kind of trialed by fire tonight.
Oh, absolutely.
Dizziest agenda we've had in a while.
This has been every, like, a year.
Welcome to the team.
Ripped some by fire.
She's faster than a speeding bullet.
Thank you. Anita has been volunteering in our office. She's been doing a great job helping with expediting the permitting process with the building permits, answering phones, and she's dove right in. So we're, we're happy to have her on the team. She'll be helping here, she'll be helping with the zoning board, taking minutes there, and also various administrative things in, in the office.
Is she getting enough hours to do that?
Not enough.
Excuse me. I would say she's probably going to need more hours.
No doubt suggestion.
I mean, okay, I mean, you think it's going to be, how many, how many permits is she going to do?
She's doing planning and zoning.
That's it, just the two?
So right now, she, right now, she's crew for eight hours.
Well, I would think she's going to need more than that. If you need a letter, I'll write you a letter. Seriously.
Thank you.
I mean, just somebody to help them go through the permitting process is, is going to, you know, take one logjam out of the doggone way. I mean, I know people who've come up to me and said, you know, we put in for building permits to do something, and the guy told me to come back in five weeks.
Hoping to improve that process.
Very good. And she's going to do it.
It's all on you, Anita.
No pressure.
She's going to be ambidextrous. She can type with both hands.
Between Anita and Caleb.
Right. Anything else we have to do?
Regret that I wasn't able to prepare minutes for this meeting from last, so we'll have that next time Anita signed.
It's all right.
That's it. Next meeting is. Give her that. Our next meeting will be January 13th, after the holidays.
No business.
Is that a motion?
What, motion to adjourn?
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn, there's a second, there's a second. All those, all those in favor?
You go, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right.
It is a vote, and it's recycling material.
Great.